Business of the county. Please be with all of those young folks that are here tonight that are trying to see the operation of how the local governments work. Please be with our young men and women in foreign lands as they go about doing their duty to allow us to have meetings such as this. In our holy name we pray, amen. Come in. Scout, come forward.
All right, face the pledge.
Pledge the pledge.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, I will turn the gavel over to Ron Akok for the elections of chairman and vice chair for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a tradition in Person County that every year the county attorney conducts the election for chair and vice chair. So, we would do so. State law requires the election of a chair and vice chair at the first meeting in December of each year. And the election that's stated in the law is for the ensuing year. So, at this point, we will ask for nominations for the office of chair. Are there such nominations?
I nominate Ray Jeffers.
Mr. Jeffers has been nominated. Are there additional nominations?
I nominate Gordon Powell.
Gordon Powell has been nominated. Are there additional nominations? If not, do I hear a motion that the nominations be closed?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. We will vote in reverse order of the nominations, in which case, uh, first will be for Mr. Powell. All those in favor of Gordon Powell to serve as chair of this board, please raise your hand. Madam clerk, I believe there are two. All those in favor of Mr. Jeffers, please raise your hand. Madam secretary, I believe there are three. Congratulations, Mr. Jeffers.
Now, we have our election for our vice chair. Do we have nominations for vice chair?
Nominate David Newell.
Any other nominations?
Nominate Kyle Perrier.
Do we hear a nomination, a motion for nominations to be closed?
So moved.
It's been moved. Further discussion? And, uh, on that motion to close the nominations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Uh, like the attorney, I guess we will vote in reverse order. So, we will, all in favor for Mr. Powell for vice chair.
No, Kyle.
Mr. Perrier. Mr. Perrier for vice chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Motion failed.
You got a vote on me.
All in favor for Commissioner Newell for vice chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item number one, approval of bonds, county attorney for Ron Akok.
Mr. Chairman, the law requires that the county board approve the issuance and approval of bonds every year for the finance director, the redshirt deeds, the tax administrator, and the sheriff. The county purchases a blanket bond to cover all of these officials through this, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Risk Management Insurance Pool. So, it would be appropriate for a motion to approve the bonds for those named officials.
Motion to approve the bonds. It's been moved. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Board members, you have the agenda in front of you. Is there any discussion or adjustment that needs to be done?
Motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion made to approve the agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Madam clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Do you have one person sign up and speak during the public comment period? Mr. Stephen Bailey.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Bailey. I'm a member of the Person County Board of Health and currently serve as its chairman. I'm here tonight to support the request to unfreeze the remaining four health department positions that were frozen this summer. Unfreezing the positions will allow the health director and the county manager the flexibility to recruit and fill positions at the health department in the manner most beneficial to the county. The positions will only be recruited and filled as needed after approval has been given by the county manager. There have been and continue to be changes at the health department since these positions were frozen. The Board of Health discussed this request to unfreeze the positions at our November meeting. All of the board members in attendance at that meeting voted in favor of the request. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, moving on to discussion of our consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. New business, fire marshal. I think I contacted all of you all about a month ago with this request that came from, uh, our fire chiefs committee, which I have served on since I've been a member of this board. Um, this request came from them unanimously to support this county in having a fire marshal again to assist them with some of the things I think that we've asked them to do, uh, as a board. Bruce Lynch from Mar-a-Lago Fire Department Chief there is prepared to speak on their behalf of their request.
Leading the commission. Your own, Mr. Jeffers has basically said all I could say. The fact that we've tried to maintain and stabilize ourselves amongst each other through our chief association, but yet it is not an organization that governs one another, which is a fire marshal position. That's what the job is there for, do is to watch and to keep a hold of everybody's department to see who's doing what, where, and when. As we know of late, if, when you do allow people the latitude of doing the luxury of doing their own thing, you can kind of get out of hand and lead down a really dark and lonely road we don't want to go down anymore in this county. Not professional. We want to remain professionally intact and professionally ran. And by doing that, that would impose that we reinstate the position of fire marshal to assist us in the day-to-day operations and then governing and then also to serve as some form of law enforcement in the fact that we have no one now to call upon in the light of fire investigations, illegal burnings, or any one of those such. It kind of leaves the chiefs with a sort of tied-up hands when we investigate the illegal burnings with no one to call. We don't know what to do with it. The county has tried to bind with the city on a lot of occasions to cover some of the bases we've had, such as investigations, which doesn't work that well. Because it's just simply their own time basis and their own shifts. A lot of times the investigation will stop when the shift stops. And we need the continuance in that, and that, once again, is a fire marshal's job. By reinstating the fire marshal, I think we can really greatly assess and ensure that we each put forth a full effort toward this lowering the ISO rating that we've been talking about and agreed to with the county from the New Bunny last year. Because Tim Blake has been doing it on their own, and I think Chief Fletcher would be more than happy to tell you how much it would help and benefit him to have another person to help him in this pursuit of lowering their ISO rating. He's having to do a lot of footwork and round work and a lot of people that somebody in that position would be doing for him and along with him. We want to step into the future here. Tired of being in the back, in the back, in the past. And I'm going to knock the first, the first and second fire marshal we've had. They were great guys. They went on to work well with Durham County. I'm sure Durham County appreciates us training them. We need one we can keep in Person County that would grow with us and, and, and help us to grow with them. Any, any questions? I have a job description that was cut, given to me by the county manager that was a derivative of, from previous position. Anyone care to have a copy of it? We didn't change it.
I would.
It's in your packet, Mr.?
Because the position that, what we see in that paper before you, it hasn't changed. It's still the duties of a fire marshal. And you see, if that person does everything according to that list, they'd do anything short of a cape to be a superhero. So, it's not in any way that they can sit down and twiddle the thumbs and say, well, they don't have anything to do today because they will. They'll have a lot to do. If it's given, you know, the proper person's given it, uh, that's given to the job that it would use for the full benefit of the county. They would be very busy. And I think it'd be a very useful idea to go ahead and reinstate this position. Just simply so that we can start moving forward specifically with this ISO inspection thing because it's going to be, certain departments are going to move faster than others, and some of us are going to need a little edge in the lawn. And this would be a great opportunity to get that person to help us move along. I have no other further than to show my pleasure.
Are the, are all of the fire chiefs in agreeance to work with the fire marshal?
At this time, I have heard nothing negative, or none of them say anything derogatory about having a fire marshal, or, you know. It's all been positive. I know we probably don't see a full turnout here tonight because it wasn't, we didn't feel that it was something we need to flood the gates with here tonight because this is something that y'all, and y'all have seen here the last three or four months, what can happen without leadership.
Well, you know, I-
And we want to let, you know, that, don't want to get, play that too much, but the fact is, they're all in favor of it.
Well, let me ask you another question then. Are all of the fire chiefs willing to take instruction from a fire marshal?
The right one?
Well?
And that goes back to the job hiring.
Mm-hmm.
If we hire the right one, it's going to take good screening.
Okay.
It's not, not to hire the easiest one or the most local one, but to hire the best one. And we do that by simply weeding out the worst for the best.
Well, I would think that somebody from out of town would be better.
I'm not going to, I don't recommend agreeing with you.
When the chiefs brought it up that night in the chiefs meeting, um, in conversation, I asked them would they make it a formal request? And, uh, they made a motion in the second, and everyone there voted on it. And then they formed a committee to, uh, discuss it further and look over the job description. And, uh, and so, that's why the request is before you today. They, they are behind it.
The job description you've got now is the same one we had originally?
No, I think the manager updated because our former fire marshal was also supervising 911 communication.
This does not include that, that-
This is just a fire marshal.
Yeah, this is just a fire marshal.
This is a 2006 version before it was merged with the 911 duties.
And based on what he just said, who goes to hire?
It depends on where we would, um, have this position fall within the organization. If this is a county government position, then county staff would hire the position. I'm not sure that we talked about-
That is they want a recommendation and this person will report to the management.
Okay, that's, that's what I understood would be. It'll be a departmental head kind of position?
This particular position and job description is not a department head. No. This would typically fall under an emergency services director type position. Department heads supervise staff and have large budgets and... This would be a position that, you know, typically we see reporting to emergency services director or it's combined with other duties to make it a department head level position.
This person would not report to you?
It's to be determined. It, you know, it would be up to you all and myself, but this is not a department head position overseeing this.
That idea, as Mr. Lynch just said, an out-of-towner would probably be a good call as well as someone that would report to you.
We would have to go through a competitive hiring process, of course.
Heidi, with the fire inspector we have now under the inspections department.
Yep.
We were to place that person under this, uh, position to give it some supervisor, uh, duties. I don't know if that will still fall under the category for you as a department head, but obviously it would maybe, um, give it a more competitive salary, having supervisor duties to maybe entice the right person to apply, uh, given that we are a rural county and sometimes it's hard to get a good, um, pool of candidates.
You have a large amount of counties right now that has multiple fire, fire marshals. We got fire marshal one, two, and three. A lot of two's looking at one's knowing they have a long tenure in their career. They're looking to move up, but there's nowhere for them to move up in. And I think that's the kind of person we want to try to target here. They're trained, they're innovative, they're motivated. Just thinking of where to go. I wouldn't have, I wouldn't recommend, not, wouldn't recommend no, no first hire. Because the job's bigger than that already.
So, is that a possibility, putting the fire, this fire inspector's under, currently in the inspections department, under this person as well?
Yes, we could move the inspections completely under this position.
So, what I would like to do tonight is to get the agreeance on the board or get a motion to approve that we want to hire a fire marshal. And then let the manager go with, she's given us some examples here with salary and so on. But I think we need to get that recommendation from her and staff, uh, on what that will look like. But before we get to that point, we have to know if that's what we want to do.
I'll make a comment. I rode around with y'all, heard this fire marshal thing before because I'm the longest one on the board, so, uh, only thing I'm going to say is I'm, I'm in favor of it, but I'm going to tell you this right now. Be careful what you ask for, you may get it. You know, that's an old saying now, but, um, and I know there was some dissatisfaction when you had them before. I mean, it wasn't, it go way back before my time, and I've been here nineteen years, so before, it might have been before you got in the fire department.
I've been, I've been chief through all the fire marshal.
So, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
And I know, and I, I don't know, we don't want to get into a long conversation, but I can tell you why. And the problem is there what with, it was a lot of different things back into that.
And it was different times too.
Yeah, you were a great person, just sprung one for the job, man. And let the rest of the-
That's the only comment I'm going to make. I, I do support it. I think it's something, the whole situation of volunteer fire departments is getting tough all the time. People have got more things to do. It's harder to get volunteers. You know, I don't know how far down the road it's going to be, but somewhere down the road, all of the fire department personnel are going to be employees of county or the cities. One, it's just the way it's heading because it's harder and harder to get employees, I mean, get the volunteers. And, uh, you know, that's not anybody's particular fault. It's just the way society is at this point in time. So, anything we can promote, keeping volunteers and working with the volunteer fire, fire department.
Well, they, fire marshal in Durham County, when it was, when the transition took place in Bethesda, in Parkwood, it was very, you know, he was in amongst that. And I think they, uh, Jeff, uh, he made a lot of, he had a lot of input into how it was going to work. So, it wasn't, they'd done it behind his back, the fire marshal, it's just times and times change.
That's exactly right.
The loads got bigger than they can handle.
What is the board's thought process on what I've said about putting the fire inspector under this position?
I don't have a problem with it. You got to have it somewhere. If something looks like it's not working right with this and manager, then they can come back and let us know that.
I'll make a motion to reinstate the fire marshal position and have the staff to come back with basically what that will look like. We're putting the fire inspector under that, would recommend it. Um, I don't know if you need to come back to us or recommend a salary or whatnot. This may suffice for you to go ahead and start the process.
I would need the board to approve the funding because it's not currently budgeted. So, I would need to come back with a request for funding for the position.
Which I think when I checked with you and finance, we do have some contingency funds that could fund this, what remained of the year since it wasn't budgeted.
You could use your contingency funds, yes.
Okay, the board's heard my motion. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all, but all of y'all.
The work's just begun.
Yeah. Thank us later.
Item number four, taxpayer appeal of land homes on Durham Road. Mr. Jones.
Good evening. I have appealed tonight of the three properties on Old Durham Road. First thing you're probably wondering is why we're having a tax appeal of 2019 in December, especially when you appointed a special board in 2013 to hear those appeals. What normally happens with value changes, we have to establish the values of January 1. And we can't get to all the properties on January 1 to figure out what they're worth. You got properties that are making some minor changes throughout the year. Um, we always back into what was like on January 1st, but we don't have those values finalized when the board's position is in session. Uh, think about your business properties, they don't enlist until, until April 15th. So, uh, in order to protect the taxpayer rights, if you don't have the value determined by the time the board E R is done, the taxpayer can use the tax bill as notice of change in value. And then from there, that starts the appeals process, and that's what we're able to do in this one. So, the E N R normally would have the taxpayer show this evidence first, and then the tax office would follow their side of the story. And then you got to question for either one, um, make a decision based on that. So, Mr. Slaughter is here. He has information to share with you.
Uh, I purchased the three houses next to DPC Pawn and Gun Shop last year for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Appealed the evaluation. Um, basically, we couldn't come together on the numbers. So, the, what the sheet I just handed you was the, the bank's internal appraisal. So, basically, what we have is the real estate agent didn't think it was worth as much as the county. The bank didn't think it was worth as much as the county. I had to put up another building for collateral just to borrow the money on it. And the, the state of the houses when we purchased them was, was very poor. Holes in subfloor. We basically redone plumbing, redone electrical. That was all done this year. So, what we're appealing is the valuation last year, and I'm just trying to get it somewhere close to purchase price. This year, after the renovations should be completed before the end of the year, we'll work with the evaluations again for, for next year. But like I said, right now, we're just appealing the, the purchase evaluation from 2018.
You have an appraisal?
No. One wasn't really required for the purchase since I had another building I could put up for collateral. I didn't want to waste the money doing it.
All right, Mr. Jones, could you, Will?
Question board right here.
Um, could you kind of dissect these, uh, tax sheets for us? Tell us what values applied where.
So, I'm assuming there's no, uh, recommendation from staff other than what's on your tax card already? That's all we have in our package is tax card and then the appeal form?
So, the tax cards that are included towards the end of your document are the tax values we have in place after we reviewed the property, Mr. Slaughter. All three properties together have a tax value of two twenty-three, three forty-seven. And that's after we get made, made improvements to the property based on Mr. Slaughter's permanent. But then we had informal appeals from Mr. Slaughter, and we went over some other conditions about the houses we were not aware of in Saginaw. Some interior problems, so we reduced our increase in value to only have an increase in value of one fifty-nine and seventy-one dollars. The purchase price of Mr. Slaughter paid for the property is in fact one twenty-seven point three. He bought all three at one price. You're correct that the document in front of you is not a fee appraiser. It's actually referred to as an A T V. It's an alternate transactional value report. And it's basically from my understanding, Mr. Currie, and he has some insight on the banking side of this, if the bank feels comfortable that they can support that loan without going to a fee appraiser based on just a- to a fee appraisal based on just their market analysis, they don't require that fee appraisal. When you break down the tax card and add all three land values together, just the land, no other improvements, you've got one sixty-three, nine hundred. So we're running between fifty-one, seven to fifty-seven thousand, two hundred for the land, and that is in line with all properties on the boulevard. This all is on B one, business one, so it's not residential property. Your fee appraisal, your A T V appraisal in front of you actually refers to a comp that's on Main Street. Main Street is a residential district, doesn't really compare to commercial. We're only adding fifty-nine thousand, four forty-seven for all three houses together. The lowest value being nineteen-nine sixty-four, who arranges at twenty-five, four eighty-two. The evaluation report in front of you also is referencing the value today, not a value for 2013 which required for an appeal for the 2013 value. The way the equalization is set up, it's not to reward someone who gets a really good price on property, and also not to penalize somebody who overpaid, so you know, we keep equity. The land value needs to be basically where it is. The house values are the only thing that's really questionable, but one house being worth just over thirteen thousand, and the highest one worth twenty-five thousand, it's not, even if you made the houses worth zero, it's gonna be worth more than Mr. Slaughter paid for all of it.
Where is the thirteen thousand?
There's one worth nineteen, twelve-nine sixty-four on the house.
Did they get the whole packet, I'm assuming?
Yes, so it's actually gonna be...
So what I gave you is supplemental, you should have received a whole packet of the tax card and everything else.
So on page eighteen, just in the north, you'll see the house value there as a value of twelve thousand, nine sixty-four.
Was this a foreclosure mine?
Nope. The gentleman was sick and just decided to start selling off certain properties, unfortunately, a point one acre lot isn't worth much to anybody, but me, so I certainly bought them. Once the real estate agent had to talk, sell them the same thing, they just weren't worth that much money, the size of the lots, you just can't do that to it.
Now, they offer some comparables that were done around 2013. One of them is Burnett's Auto Lot, that's on your page five. He paid seventy thousand dollars for that in late 2012. He immediately started renovations, after renovations in 2013 with a value of eighty-five, six oh four, making that land value fifty-four, four fifty, a very similar sized lot.
Where was that?
That's Burnett's auto sales right across the road and a little bit further south.
What lot value did you have on it?
Fifty-four, four fifty. And then right after that, Burnett, on a separate sale, bought the next lot coming north. He bought that one fifty thousand, that was August of 2012, we have a tax value on that one of fifty-four, four fifty again, so still keeping in line with the fifty, fifty-five thousand dollar range. And then you come one more lot north again, that one sold in 2014 for forty-eight thousand, that did have a house on it, the house was torn down immediately after sale, and the land value of that one again, fifty-four, four fifty. The west side of the boulevard has a little bit lower value than the east side because of the photography, those lots look down to pretty quick, but also there's lots of deeper, which makes up for the photography problem. So they end up with a very similar value, low size of value.
Other questions from the board?
What's your intent, Mike, you're gonna renovate them?
Most renovations are finished on June, we're finishing on the third one, should anything done by the end of March.
There will be a change in value for next year, and again, another appeal process. And you all are notifying that before you go.
When you first came to me with this, you all adjusted it, the structure.
Yeah, we adjusted it up for the renovations, and then we went back and adjusted back down for the other conditions Mr. Slaughter bought from changing, making the total increase that we went up fifteen seventy-one, fifteen hundred dollars. The biggest difference being the difference in what Mr. Slaughter paid for the property and where we started off. Basically paid about half the price, basically that's it.
So you're telling me your total increase was fifteen thousand, seventy-one?
Fifteen hundred dollars, one thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars, over where we were from the time he bought it and after his improvements and everything had been adjusted. So the biggest issue before isn't the fifteen hundred dollar increase, it's where we started with initial value, and the land value being, land value alone being more than you paid for all the properties together. Just like the houses weren't even there, and he still paid less than that. But keep everything fair, it's hard to lower that land value now, because that's where all the land is selling for in the boulevard.
All right, and this tax, your total is two thirty-four, two thirty-eight?
On item nine, page two, total value is two twenty-three, three forty-seven.
So that's the current assessed value?
Yes, sir. That's after we went up and then back down, facing other conditions.
And you got what value for the houses?
All houses together, fifty-nine, four forty-seven. The lowest being twelve-nine sixty-four through twenty-five, four forty-two.
I guess your request, Mike, is to have it at your price that you paid for one twenty-seven?
I think I, when I appealed, I put in for forty-five thousand.
Forty-five each?
It wasn't a sale under duress, it wasn't a sale under duress, like I said, even the commission real estate agent didn't think it was worth it. The bank initially only wanted to win ninety thousand, and we had to talk her up to finally get an internal value of one two-six-five.
I see, we always have this conversation during equalization, we agree to disagree some of the times.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That being said, I seek fair market value of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, total price, that was not under duress, it was not a foreclosure. That being said, I will make a motion to change each tax card to forty-three thousand dollars, which would definitely just above fair market value.
Forty-three for the land value, or forty-three taxable value?
Taxable value. That was... I'll put that on the floor, another motion, Mr. Chairman?
We have a motion on the floor to change the taxable value of each card to forty-three thousand, is that correct?
Correct.
Clarification, for Mike, is are you wanting to lower the land, mostly the houses, mostly it doesn't matter in the motion?
You know, we could get into how to, where the...
I'll take care of the...
Yes, sir.
Further discussion from the board?
Tell me, what you ended up with a total value of, huh?
Forty-three thousand, for the structure.
That's right.
So what...
Twenty-nine, so our fair market value, what he...
And what did you get after you made the adjustment?
Two twenty-three, three forty-seven.
So we're over a hundred thousand dollars difference, two hundred, is that? This throws this value of this property a whole lot lower than the rest of the property on the boulevard, I bet.
It does, and in order to get that value, I have to...
The houses, I'm kind of discounting the houses, I'm looking at the property, you've got it lower than what the property value is, lower that mountain. If you were telling me you were fixing to set it at a property value of, what, fifty-nine thousand each?
So if you did just the land value, you'd have one sixty-three, nine, and fifty-something, that's around fifty-four, about three in the head. If you made the house value zero, you'd still be at one sixty-three, nine, and the houses are being rented now, two of them are rented, and the third one should be finished renovation here shortly, coming here. So the houses have some value.
Now, the comparison you gave here where Burnett purchased a lot, and there was a house on that lot, and he tore it down, I guess?
Well, he had two sales, actually three. The first one, there was a...
I'm talking about not where the lot is originally, but the one he purchased in August, you said.
He bought that and then tore the house down.
Tore the house down, and he paid total for that, fifty thousand?
He paid fifty thousand, we had fifty-four, four fifty, and we have a fifty-four, four fifty value on it today. It's a very similar sized lot.
What is the size of it?
It is a fifty by one ninety-nine. Mainly the front footage would matter, so on yours...
Those Barnett sales, what prices now?
So yours is fifty foot on one, if I can answer one question first, please. Your fifty foot on the second, and maybe fifty foot on three, so exact same size, fifty foot, on the front.
I just know that he could reserve a point more.
And your question, Mr.?
What those comps you gave as far as Barnett sales or purchases?
Okay, so the first one, the first one, the first one included the building that he kept, and he paid seventy thousand for that, did some renovation work, he had a value of eighty-five, six oh four, land value fifty-four, four fifty.
And that's a corner lot, if you could say that.
It is a corner lot, yes, sir. The next one, which is not a corner lot, coming north, he paid fifty thousand for that one, that was August of 2012, he immediately, that one did not have a house on it, so tax value on that one's fifty-four, four fifty, so he underpaid about forty-four, fifty, at my base, correct?
All right, now, don't we have to value this based on 2013 value?
Yes, sir, that actually required by statute, so...
So what he paid for in there is irrelevant, we can halfway determine what it was in 2013? Have you got any comps that were in 2013? You had one that was two twelve.
So late 2012 was what we're basing on, but 2013 on was January first of the valuation date. Sales a year, year and a half before the revaluation doesn't matter. Unless there's been a tremendous change in the market, where values are going up and down, a sale a year or two after the revaluation still makes sense. If we had a fee appraisal in front of us, we would ask the fee appraiser to redo their appraisal to give us a January first, 2013 value, that would have been the best evidence, not the purchase price. There has to be some concession given when someone buys three properties, they always gonna get a better given by them.
What kind of depth has he got on those lots?
They are more shallow than they are across the road on the west side. He is running one ninety-nine on Burnett's, one ninety-seven on the other Burnett's, one ninety-two on the third Burnett, then we get to Mr. Slaughter, and we are running... We did not do a depth adjustment on this. So there's a certain range in depth that doesn't adjust up or down, so it's not listed out as a separate feature, but eighty-five to a hundred foot deep.
And you still based them on the same front footage as the two-hundred foot depth?
We based them on the same footage, same front footage, but different front foot rate. We adjusted down on the west side because of the property. You just know those lots dropped down pretty quick right there, Burnett's, best in north of Burnett's. But when you adjust it down to the property, and then adjust it up because they're deep, you end up coming up with very, very similar value. That is exactly the same value.
They do bump up against residential property, don't they?
Both sides do, yes, sir. The Burnett's property bumps up to the Rockwell Housing Development, and...
And the depth on two of my lots actually go into a point almost right off the bank porch of one of them.
All right, so from a, you're assessing them at a commercial rate, and...
You know, those triangle shapes, we would do the average depth, so you must be midpoint, we wouldn't do the longest line or the shortest line.
I think Mr. Perea's got a good price on these.
Call the question, Mr. Chairman? Called a question, I'll have to vote on the question, so I'll just ask the other members to have a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Perea's motion to change the taxable value to forty-three thousand on all three tax cards, signify by saying aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries? All in favor of aye, please raise your hand. All opposed.
Thank you.
Number five, request to unfreeze health department positions. Mr. Chairman, please.
Good evening. Since July eighth, the health department has assured our maternal health, family planning, and S T D services for residents of Person County, their medical providers both in and outside of the county. While these services are being provided by other facilities, the health department still incurs cost through the assurance of those services. We receive invoices for the services that they are providing. Since our discussion here in this forum in late August, there have been some personnel changes, including the reclassification of the nursing director position to a nursing supervisor's position, and we had Tabitha Philpott rejoin our staff on October third as our nursing supervisor. Also, a work group of board of health members, county commissioners, and health department staff have met to assess the needs of the community. Currently, there are no obstetricians or full-time gynecologists providing care in Person County, individuals who need maternity care, family planning services, or S T D diagnosis and treatments are having to seek care from other providers, including utilizing the emergency department not only here at Person Memorial, but Duke Regional, and U N C in Hillsborough. Additionally, there are no other local providers providing what they call a zero sliding fee scale, where the patients can go in, and based on your income, you do not have like a co-pay where the health department does provide that service. Also, according to the most recent community health assessment, the number of uninsured individuals in Person County has increased since 2015 despite insurance options offered through the Affordable Care Act. U S Census Bureau estimates there are forty-nine, approximately forty-nine hundred uninsured residents in Person County with about half of those being females. And this does not account for the uninsured that we also have, underinsured that we also have in our county. To reduce access to care barriers and to better meet the needs of Person County residents, the health department is making strides to rebuild our maternity program, followed by our family planning program, and then our S T D services. In addition to assessing the services and the needs of the community, the work group also discussed the staffing needs of the health department. Currently, there are four frozen positions, there are three public health nurse two positions, and one community health technician positions. These positions are frozen, and the cost of those positions are currently in, are accounted for in the current budget in our personnel lines. The unfreezing of the positions would provide flexibility of hiring staff, improve the efficiency of hiring those positions, and then allow us to move forward. The current procedure when we have a vacancy is for me to request to have that position posted and filled to the county manager, she reviews the need of the position, and it either approves or denies that position request. The work group requests the unfreezing of the remaining four positions to allow for this flexibility and to allow us to continue to rebuild our department.
Janet, since June, what is invoices amounts that you've incurred? How much have you spent on them?
We have received invoices from LabCorp in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, and we have also received about the same amount from Person Family Medical Center. Currently, Durham County Health Department, they are assuring the maternal health services with the understanding that we will retake those services back over, they are doing that in kind for us right now.
So roughly twenty-four thousand so far?
Yes. And we are not able to...
What would be your expected revenues had you had these positions in-house?
The expected revenues would vary depending on if they're Title X clients, whether we could file Medicaid and have a Medicaid cost settlement, it would depend on whether the client's uninsured, they're Medicaid.
Have you looked at the ones you were serving prior to the positions being frozen? If you still had those, what that possibly would look like revenue-wise?
Last year, for those services that were provided in those various programs... Um, last year for those services that were provided in those various programs. Um, last year in our family planning, um, program, we generated two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for those, for that program. For our STD program, which is a, a program that we must provide, is thirty-five thousand dollars.
And how much?
Thirty-five. And. And then the maternal health program, just for Medicaid, we generated a hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Now, is that just what was generated or is that revenue, is that over compared to your expenses for staff you?
That is, that is the revenue for those programs.
Since June, because that's.
That was the last fiscal year. Did I misunderstand that? Okay.
Your work group, who was it made up of?
Um, that was myself, our board chair, Stephen Bailey, our vice chair, Dr. Jeffrey Noblet, um, Dr. Kimmy Yarborough, and Dr. Van Tillet. And then we had commissioners, Carrer and Powell on the work group, myself, and then our nursing supervisor, Tabitha Philpott.
And what was the findings of the work group?
The findings of the work group is that we needed to provide these services to our residents in county due to transportation barriers and barriers of the individuals being able to be seen locally and to, um, staff the agency efficiently to provide those services.
And you're averaging, how many people are there?
Um, well, currently, we were due to only, um, providing immunizations, we're averaging eight, eight individuals a day because that is our current number, um, for last year.
All right, what were the numbers before you, you froze the position?
Last year, we served two thousand twenty-five unduplicated patients. And this does not include WIC. We currently maintain a caseload of approximately a thousand individuals for WIC as well. And this does not include environmental health. Um, and then last year, we had an approximate average per day of thirteen visits, which our schedule had been modified due to staffing levels where staff had vacated some of the positions.
Who did the work with me?
November seventh.
I was there, of course, as you mentioned, um, in that work group. Learned some things that I was unaware of and, uh, learned some positive things that we need to look at. Invariably, bottom line, I think it's our responsibility to take care of our people in Person County. We don't have the means to do so. Beyond that, it's, um, simply the right thing to do to provide you with the staff. So that you won't have to turn those away. And those may go someplace else and not even get service there. Some of what you're talking about are communicable diseases, is that correct? Probably the most. And we can't turn our back on that type need. Again, sometimes we, you know, we base it on data. We look at numbers, and in this case, we're looking at dollars and cents. But where do you draw the line between dollars and cents and value of a person? And, uh, and I commend you for the steps being taken to modify or rearrange your, uh, staff. And I think personally, that was part of the problem. So again, I learned some valuable information while in that meeting. And, um, and again, I think it's, it's our responsibility to, to support your request, uh, to maintain the health of, of Person County. But again, sometimes things, most of them can't work.
Would you or Commissioner Perea be willing to share some of those things that you all learned since we didn't, three of us didn't get a report or anything as far as the work group? I didn't even know there was a work group being, uh, meeting. And that's, I think, been my holdup all along, is trying to get some of these questions answered. And really, in abstract, all we have is the request and some insurance information. But is there anything that you can share with us from a Person County aspect that?
The top of the list is, is providing for those that, that need that service. And, uh, again, where do you draw the line to put a value on that kind of thing? Because we all know that everyone in our county can't afford what we ran the staple game. And, uh, again, I don't know, I don't, I won't place that blame on anybody, it's a fact. And, uh, so I think that was one very important thing to me. The other thing striking was that, uh, because of lack of staffing, they were referring patients to other providers and those providers couldn't, couldn't provide that service. So there you go, it's, you just have to uncertain. To me, that was extremely important.
Person Family Medical doesn't have its sliding skill fee?
It does not go to zero. So anytime a patient goes there, then we get the deal for it to make up the difference.
How many patients did you see altogether last year? Or on the, on the good year?
Um.
On a full year before all this chaos started?
In two thousand seventeen, we saw, um, we had fifty-two hundred visits. Um, in two thousand eighteen, we saw forty-five hundred visits.
Okay, and your budget for those two years were what?
I did not bring those two past year's budgets with me, I could.
All right, well, this year, your budget is what, one point three three million?
Health department budget?
Mm-hmm. Well, I know the year before was a million four or something, I believe.
But, uh, um.
I'd have to go write my budget with you.
Well, my only, my only ob- objective here is to find out what does it cost us per visit to? If there's a.
Um, last year, the, our, our full budget, um, the actual expenditures, I mean, the actual budget was four point one. That was for last year.
And you saw how many people?
That included home health and hospice, and that also includes environmental health.
Okay, well, let's just take, uh, environmental health out of it. What was your part of it?
Environmental health generally runs about.
It was about nine hundred thousand, wasn't it?
No, it's more like six. Um, and then you have also removed home health and hospice, which was about three. So that's roughly a million dollars.
You take that off, what, four point one?
Yes.
Okay, so you got.
Four point four five, right. You said four point one, you took out six hundred thousand for environmental health.
Took one.
Three hundred for another. It was about nine hundred off of that. All right, so you divide your number of patients into that amount, what do you come up with?
The, the problem with that, respectfully, Commissioner Newell, is that we provide WIC services, which also accounts for a thousand individuals. We also provide care management services, which is for children at risk and pregnant moms at risk as well. Those two programs, we also have our immunization program, tuberculosis program, rabies prevention program, and many other programs, not just direct, direct clinical services.
Okay, but is that part of your, is that part of your four thousand and some visits?
Yes.
All right, how many, do you have any kind of figure just to tell us exactly how many people you saw in the clinic there? And what was the cost of the clinic? My only reason to ask these questions is, uh, if you average seeing, if you, how many people you have in the clinic? Twelve, thirteen?
Clinic staff?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the projected number that we had discussed with rebuilding the staff would have been one lab person as well as the, either three nurses or two nurses in the CNA. So that would be four to five at most for direct clinic services. And then you have a contract duty provider that would come in and provide ADG, Y, and N care in addition to the enhanced role of nurse services that you would provide using your existing nurses that we hired.
Well, my main concern is, you know, however we talk about it, you know, it's my opinion, since Obamacare came into existence, you don't see near as many people as you used to. Back before that, how many people did you average see? Because the budget hadn't come down, the budgets continued to go up. My, my, excuse me, my only concern is, can we provide the services for less money, however we do it?
And that is why I'm requesting these positions to be unfrozen. An example is, and I'm very grateful to this board for unfrozen the two PHN three positions as well as the lab position in July. But an alternative would be to hire one PHN three position, which we are interviewing for this week, and then change the second position to a two or a community health tech, whatever position better meets the needs of the department and does that more economically.
Can't you do that with existing personnel?
We, in order to fill a PHN two position or a community health tech position, that position, those positions have to be unfrozen. Right now, I can't post those or advertise those because those are frozen by this board. And that is the request that I have brought before this board tonight, is to allow that stopgap to be with the county manager once the data is presented. Instead of having to come back to the board each time.
Is that your understanding?
Instead of having to come back to this board each time, we would like to hire a different type of position. That would allow flexibility and efficiency in the hiring process.
I don't have anything against your positions, Janet. The only thing I have is my answers still haven't been answered. And then you all formed a work group on November seventh, and I just learned today that there was a work group. So there was no data presented or given to us, uh, the findings of the outcome of that work group.
That's what we're doing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
But, so you're asking to base a decision, uh, off of ten minutes worth of conversation? I mean, you all both attended the work group, and neither one of you reported back to the board.
And that was.
And so I would like to see some of the information. You have received information, so I'm sure you were ready to make a decision tonight. I have yet to receive the information.
The recommendation from.
So I would not be ready to make a decision based off of that tonight.
The recommendation from that board was to come and present those findings to us. The fact is, there are services that this county is not providing, and we're putting a dollar figure on it. We just added a bar martial position tonight. Where these are, this money's already in the allotted budget for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. It was already approved by this board to, to use. Now, we're having to send people to other facilities. Some, they, to other facilities, they won't be able to provide, uh, provide those services because of insurance. So what are we looking at here? We're here to serve the people of this county, and we're doing an unjust buy, continuing to pick, 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 pick. Let Janet do her job. This is the third or fourth time we brought her up here to ask questions about positions. You know, in my experience of thirteen years on the board, I have never seen a director interrogated. I will use the word interrogated by a board of county commissioners over several positions that have already been approved by this board. Therefore, I make a motion to approve the positions, unfreeze positions that have already been allotted, um, in the budget. I am making, I am making a, I am making a.
I have not spoken. I'm going to make use of you for the first time tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I have not, I've sat right here and held over my mouth.
She reserves the right not to say.
Every commission in here has had a chance to speak, and you can make your motion, that's fine, I don't have a problem.
And you have discussion after I make my motion.
I want to have something to say before you make it. And if you make it. But everybody else in here has spoken, every commission in here has had their say, I ain't over my mouth.
Chair reserves the right, and I accept your motion this time to have discussion.
If you want to make your motion when I get through, that's fine. I won't try to supersede you or make one in front of you. You can do what you want to. I mean, you want to get all emotional about it, that's entirely up to you. You need to look at this from a direct standpoint. Now, let me tell you something. You didn't vote for the budget to start with, you voted against it.
I had a budget that gave the exact amount of money.
And that's a different topic.
That's the same damn topic.
You want to sit here and fuss about the budget you didn't vote for. We put most of the stuff you wanted in the budget, and then you sit right in here and vote against the budget. And that's up to your prerogative, and I don't care if you did, that's fine.
Chair, Mr. Clayton, if you have.
Oh. One of the questions I want to ask is, you listed three things in there, you listed maternal health, family planning, and STD. I know STD is required by the state. You've got to provide that service. Now, when we unfroze those other positions a few weeks ago, a couple of months ago, wherever it was, the people that were going into Durham County or going into some other county receiving Medicare or Medicaid money, that resident, some of that money comes back to Person County. You've got to look at, you've got to account for that, I'm sure, that that. Let's say that mom went Durham County and she was on Medicare. Well, they collected Medicare for seeing her, but they got a portion of that Medicare came back to Person County because she's a Person County resident. Am I right?
The, the Medicaid follows.
I meant Medicaid.
Wherever the patient receives services is where that Medicaid follows.
But some of that money comes back to the county of residence.
If that, it, we do not, we are fee for service. So we, unless we provide the service, we do not receive that Medicaid.
Do you get anything back from them? That's not what I understood.
No, unless we provide primary security care management.
Now, maternal health is not required by the state. Am I correct or am I wrong?
You are correct, but we are not.
Okay. Uh, family planning, it's not required by the state.
We have to assure both of those services.
But STD is?
Yes.
And what I was getting at is that some of the reinstatement that you got before was, uh, for somebody to try to follow some of this to make sure that we're, somebody's got to deal with these patients. I mean, you know, when they come back from that, in some counties, they actually make home visits. They don't get to see them in the health department. Anybody here making any home visits to any of these?
Yes.
And you're having to do that?
Yes.
Okay, did the physician that we reinstated, did that help you with doing that?
No.
So you're asking for a physician here now to help you with doing some of those home visits?
Yes.
Okay, will you get reimbursed for doing some of those home visits?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's how you'll get that money?
Yes.
Okay, that's the money I'm trying to follow. I know that when they go, no matter where they go to the clinic at, when they come back, somebody's got, somebody's got to have contact with them. And if they can't, if you see them in your clinic, then you can send your technician down there, and you can have contact with them in the clinic. Okay? If, if you don't, if they see them in Durham or Ever, I'm using that as an example because they, they could be seeing them over here at Person Family Medical, but you still are going to be responsible for having contact with them. Okay, I got that part. So you need somebody to do that?
Yes.
Okay, you got three physicians on it. And that, that's just in what, maternal health?
We cross-train our staff.
I know, but I mean, far as the program that's being used to reimburse, I, I don't mind who's doing it. It's just, okay, that's in maternal. Right now, in family planning, how are you reimbursed for that?
Either Medicaid, Title X dollars, or there are family planning grant funds, or child health funds, actually.
If they go to another place for family planning, do you get anything back for that person even though they're getting Medicaid?
No.
So you completely out of the loop on them, just on maternal health. Right now, on STDs, uh, are you reimbursed for anything if they're seeing? All right, now, on STDs, are you reimbursed for anything if they're seen somewhere else?
If they're seen somewhere else and we receive the bill, then we can pull down a little bit of state funding for that.
And how do you have to follow up on that STD? Do you have people from the state coming in following these cases?
We still will have all its, in regards to surveillance, is that what you're speaking of? We use the NCS system, which I am having to do because we do not have staff to use that system, in regards to make sure that they receive treatment, adequate treatment. If they don't receive adequate treatment, then we have to work to refer those to another provider because we cannot bring them in to treat them in the health department.
Now, do you have any idea, these people that are doing a lot of this field work, would they be following 20 patients a month, or 40 patients a month, or 10 patients a month? How much, what would be their, what would be normally their work level?
In care coordination, the number for maternity patients, it could be anywhere from 30 to 50, depending on if it's child or maternity.
Would that be per employee, trying to look up to that many? Most of them don't have quite, don't try to look at quite that many. Oh. What's the community health technician position, Bill?
That is a CNA position, the, that would triage patients when they come in the clinic, so you're not using an RN or a nurse. It's a less expensive position. They triage the patients, they assist the providers in the exam rooms, and also, they can be cross-trained to back up the lab personnel, because if we remember, we have one lab position, not two, and that person can back up the lab person, the lab personnel if they cross-train.
So if you, if you had somebody to follow these maternal health people, even, even, that's like Mr. Newell said, a lot of, with this new regulations with, with the health rules and everything, people can go to more places. It used to be they couldn't hardly go anywhere but the health department, but they can go to more places. But if they draw Medicaid money, and they're a resident of Person County, if you had a person to follow them, you could pick up that money, because you got to do the visits, do the home visit or the office visit. Do you have any idea how much money that would generate?
Um, the...
I'm back to Mr. Newell now, are, are, are we generating enough money to help offset the costs of this?
Well, the pregnancy care management program is the one I think you're speaking of, and that position actually, that program actually had excess revenues last year.
It did what?
Had excess revenues.
Okay. I guess what I'm getting at is, if you don't get the patients back with Medicaid, you still going to get some kind of reimbursement because they're a resident of Person County, and that's a public agency. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
No, sir. If we do not provide the services like any doctor's office, if we do not provide the service, we cannot bill for that service.
Yes, but if you provide that service for that maternal health, if they provided it in Durham County, and they came back up here to Person County, and nobody over there is following them up here, you've got to provide, somebody has to base for that patient, haven't you?
And, and we are providing that service. That, that's called pregnancy care management. We have a social worker that actually travels to Durham to see patients in the Durham County Health Department. Sometimes she has to go to UNC to see them there, or she has to do home visits here because they're not offering that service.
Okay, but if you were offering that service, you wouldn't have to do that?
If we were offering the service, then she could see the person here in town at our health department.
Okay, now, I'm going to ask you one other question. This is one I hadn't thought of. If, if you've got, you're offering the services and you're seeing them here, and then a patient chooses to go to Durham anyway, do you have to try to still follow them by them going over there, or does that relieve you of the responsibility because you're offering the service here?
No, if it's a Medicaid patient under that program, we have to still follow them and offer that service.
So what you probably would do, if you didn't have very many of them going over there, if it was only a few, you'd do a home visit?
Yes.
See, that's what I was trying to get at. So you're going to see that patient period, one way or another?
Before care management. That's not necessarily, you know, the clinical services are the part that we're missing right now.
But, right, but you cut costs on somebody traveling to these, to this other facility if you had the clinical service here?
Yes.
Even if they went to the other facility, you'd still cut costs because they would go from here to wherever they live, five miles or 10 miles out in Person County, instead of 30 miles to Durham or Orange, and the time they over there. Okay, so, what, you need something for STD, and you've got somebody doing some of this maternal health, probably not somebody that can handle all of it, I don't know. But in my mind, what I'm thinking about is, we put the money in this budget for all of these positions we just froze.
The money is there for all of the positions. When it's frozen, it just means she is not allowed to hire them. The money is still committed into the health department budget.
But does that prohibit her from changing titles or whatnot?
She is able to reclassify positions with state approval for positions that she already has filled, not the frozen positions.
Janet, you mentioned a minute ago, excuse me, Janet, that some of the people were winding up at the emergency rooms?
Yes.
Okay, are we getting billed for that?
We are not assuring those services, but the, what we're having to do is, they go to the emergency room, and they are tested there, but then the follow-up falls back on the health department. So once we have to follow those patients, then we have to refer those to either Person Family Medical Center or the Durham County Health Department. Then, in that case, we have to pay for them at that point. But for a patient to go to the emergency room, wherever, is not a good rate use of medical resources and time.
No, is that something that you would be providing for at, at your clinic?
Yes, we have, until July 8th of this year, we provided that mandated service.
Okay, so that, that's one more thing. Do you have any idea how many people are going to Grahamville, Vance, Durham County, Orange County, and I don't know if any are going to Isle of Man or the Cowboys, probably not, but do you have any idea how many you've got going out of the county that might not would go out of the county? Any estimate, any way to estimate? You know how many they're getting over there, because those departments will tell you.
Yeah, well, if we receive calls and we have to refer out, then we have to send a referral for one of that patient. I actually received a call today from a patient myself, because they could not get them for their family plan and service, and it was time for their family plan and service.
Okay, how many of those do you think you get?
Um, we usually get two or three a day, and we send those referrals.
Grahamville, Bucky Burrow, any of them reported back to you, how many of them are serving?
No.
But they would, if you asked them?
They could, yes.
Further discussion from the board, any other comments?
I'd like to know what the county manager thinks about this.
Well, my position is not different from the last time that we had this discussion. And some of the county mandated services, we don't, we aren't able to run them like a business, so we do have to provide service for people who can't afford to pay. And I think it's embarrassing that we have pregnant mothers traveling out of county that we can't serve here in Person County, when we have in the past been able to do that. So it's not a matter of the funding, because that money is already there. You pay staff to provide services and to figure out what positions are needed to provide those services, and that's what we would like the opportunity to be able to do. We do and have scrutinized positions, try to operate efficiently. We are constantly looking at that, not just in the health department, all of our departments. I'm not sure what it is that you need from us to assure you that we're able to operate these programs efficiently.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is to unfreeze the positions. I think that this is very inefficient. We are able to, Janet and I, fill the positions on, on an as-needed basis, and I would hope that you would trust that our programs will move forward and operate in an efficient manner.
Kind of what I was getting at about people that haven't been served out of the county, that, you know, we've got to go into Grahamville County, to their clinic, we've got to go into Durham, to their clinic, Crawford, to their clinic. And I asked you where the money was at, still in the budget?
It's still in the budget. And while other people can do that, if you have a transportation barrier, you know, I, I don't know how you get to those places.
That's all. You don't, if you want to go back? Pretty here, if you'd like to offer a motion?
Motion to unfreeze all the positions, as stated, recommended by the health director.
So a motion on the floor, further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion here.
Thank you.
Round number six, what's your budget calendar? How much you want?
Commissioners, got the proposed budget calendar in your packet. This is outlining the upcoming budget process. It's already that time of year where we're starting this. So the budget calendar is before you for adoption. There's no ma- major changes to what you're used to seeing in the past. We have the CIP presentation that sort of starts for you all when we presented in April, and then the adoption of the CIP, followed by a recommended budget presentation in May, and then you'll hold one public hearing, as well as any number of work sessions that the board might desire, with an adoption of the budget scheduled for June 15th. Questions or suggestions on that process?
When do we start?
We start in January with our CIP requests.
I'm talking about the, the board. When do we start, Bill?
Listed on here is the board retreat for your February 3rd meeting, which typically includes some direction on the budget.
Any questions, comments for the manager?
We need a motion?
I would request adoption of the budget calendar.
So moved.
So moved for approval, further discussion. Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion here. Chairman's report. I would just like to thank this board for the opportunity to serve as chair for the next year. We don't always agree on the road to get there, but I think we're all going in the right direction, which is what's best for Person County, and I look forward to taking that ride with you all this year and working with each and every one of you. Manager's report?
Um, I don't have anything other than to let you know that we had our new HR director start today, and I look forward to introducing her to the board at a future meeting.
Mr. Powell, you have a report?
Not, not in particular, but one thing of interest. I've been observing a business that's growing here in Person County, sort of flying under the radar in OBX extracts and their investment. Numbers are approaching $20 million, and we just haven't heard much about anybody but there.
What's the name of it?
OBX extracts.
Is that...
Hemp processing.
Oh, oh, okay.
And 20, roughly $20 million in growing investment, I think it's sizable in Person County. Current employing maybe 60 people with plans to probably double that amount, but anyhow, it's, it's just interesting that we haven't had that discussion, but that's quite a boost to the economy of Person County.
Mr. Glazer?
Don't forget, you want us to blow pancake? Decided it all day.
Getting the cheese?
Yes, sir. How many you want?
So you missed that.
15.
Why didn't buy them at half price? You sure?
Yes. Two dollars off?
How many? Half of what is two dollars?
I'll get you two dollars off now. Buy them now, they're five dollars, buy them at the door or something.
Commissioner, for you?
Uh, just wanted to remind, Jingle Lomane is this Thursday, always a good time, so I encourage everyone to attend.
Mr. Newell?
I don't have anything.
Y'all hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move in a proper second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. We out of here.